Excuse me, it's, yeah, November 4th. It says Tuesday on here, it's Wednesday, November 4th. Uh, do I have a motion to suspend the rules? Got a motion by George Lawrence, do I have a second? Second by Felix Gines. Lucy, would you? Oh, I, it's okay. Mr. Tisdale?
Sure. And then we'll follow that with the pledge.
We'll go back, we'll come back to this on the floor.
Well, if you'll stand, please, for a quick prayer. We do this at the beginning of each month. Let us pray. We lie down in peace, knowing our sins are forgiven. We lie down in peace, knowing death has no fear. We lie down in peace, knowing no powers can harm us. We lie down in peace, knowing angels are near. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Mr. Leonard, would you lead us in the pledge? It is?
My present, I lead this into the pledge, in the United States of America, in the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. We'll return to the agenda order. Lucy, if you'd please read the substitutions and removals.
To our policy agenda, we're removing 4A, resolution to appoint a president to the council. We're removing 4B, resolution to appoint a vice president to the council. We're substituting the exhibit only for 4C, resolution to deny a conditional use for short-term rental for 120 Acacia Avenue. And we're substituting 4D, exhibit-only resolution to grant a conditional use for a paint and body shop at 1636 Pops Ferry Road. On our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5P, resolution authorizing waiver of building permit fees for residential and commercial repair or construction. We're adding 5R, resolution authorizing execution of grant of access and temporary use for waiver of liability for the Biloxi School District. And we're also adding item 5S, resolution authorizing and approving entry into the seconded, excuse me, second amended and restated agreement for property maintenance with Gulf Breeze Landscaping.
I've got a motion to move the amended agenda. Second by Felix Gines, the movement was by George Lawrence. All in favor of the agenda as amended? Motion carries unanimously. We'll begin with the presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor, your report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And not much has happened since we last met, right? So, but, uh, as I mentioned in our director's meeting this week, I'm extremely proud of each department. They went night and day. Uh, you know, there's a number of things that are in place right now, uh, for our citizens and for their, uh, benefit and just, uh, to get back to normal, in addition to doing, dealing what we've been dealing with, with the pandemic. But, uh, you know, the assessment of the damages in every phase, from the ballpark to the, to the piers, to, to the traffic signals, to everything you could think of. Uh, we personally rode the city a number of times and, and pigging, uh, things we need to do, and we're still assembling our game plan to not only execute those things, like, like the, uh, cleanup. Crowder Gulf has been engaged and they will be on the road, uh, seven, uh, 24, uh, to remove those, uh, debris items and, uh, help us get back to normal. Again, the, uh, Councilman Glavine has some, some permit kind of, uh, fee, wa- waivers that will help people fix what needs to be fixed without the rigamarole that normally takes place. But, uh, again, let me say how proud I am of each of, uh, of our 600 or so employees and what they've done. And, uh, we hope we can re- reward them in, in some way, because they've all, uh, gone over and above. So, uh, I want to thank them, all our directors, on what has been done. Uh, and we will be, uh, meeting to understand what we can do after this storm. We dodged four bullets. It was one more than a revolver. And, uh, we, we got it, we caught it. But, uh, I think we'll survive this and be even, you know, better than before. So, uh, Vincent Cecilia, you got this in the mail, uh, and kind of staging what, and looking forward of, uh, to what and when things will happen, so you can get back to normal. Again, you know, we're working with FEMA and MEMA, MEMA and FEMA, uh, again, specifically to do, we may do things differently this time to, so we can mitigate what will happen in the future. We don't want to do this again, you know, with, with regard to hardening things. And, uh, hopefully we'll get some support in, in, uh, how we rebuild what, what has been damaged. Uh, again, you know, the water, uh, as, uh, Billy Ray said, water, uh, pressure and, and the system was stayed in place. He said, you know, the wells were number one and number two was number two. So, uh, for those of you who are listening, but, uh, but he's, uh, we've been extremely proud of, you know, the whole, uh, uh, police fire, uh, water sewer, uh, engineering. They've done more than, and of course, everybody in this room, everybody in, in this, uh, City Hall has done their part. So, we'll, um, rapidly, uh, apply for whatever reimbursement we can. Uh, we have some, you know, always good news coming from the CARES Act and some of those things that, uh, that are coming. So, we're fighting two battles, but, uh, it looks good, outlook's good. Uh, and, uh, I think that's about it. Mike, you got anything else?
Sounds good. The, uh, the document that the mayor waved to you will be mailed to your homes, uh, to be delivered tomorrow. It's a, a four-page, short version of, uh, B News. It tells you everything that's going to happen with regards to cleanup, so that people know where to put their stuff out and when they're coming and so forth. So, we, uh, have engaged, this, uh, school district has been good enough to give us the use of the old boulevard property as a lay-down area for the, the trucks that are picking up, uh, all the yard trash and debris, um, on the south side of the bay. On the north side of the bay, the trucks will take the debris directly to the, uh, landfill. And, um, that army of trucks will be engaged, well, they'll be trucking tomorrow. And they'll keep doing, they'll keep trucking till we're done.
That concludes our report. Want to spread, spread the minute? Oh, so let's spread that, uh, travel expense, uh, to the minutes of the Biloxi travel expense card.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your report. Um, before I get to the council reports, I, I can't tell with the masks on, is that Kevin Felser in the back? I'd like to, I'd like to acknowledge our, our, our House rep, Kevin Felser. I don't know, is there, would you like to give us a report? Is there anything you care to say? Where's the, uh?
I don't have anything to say about the, about the, 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 the mayor. He didn't, whatever he, he said about the, the, the.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Kevin.
Councilman Tisdale, your report?
Yes, I, I'd like to echo the mayor's, uh, compliment on, on the department heads and the employees, uh, here and there, their good work after the storm that came through. Uh, I, I also noticed the boardwalk, as I heard a lot, and some of you may have, that the, the boardwalk will be in my front yard, yard with the first storm and, so, uh, hustled down there Friday and took some pictures. It's, uh, sand, little seaweed, looks great. Whatever piers we have to have built, whoever designed that and the firm that did that, engineered it and constructed it, that's who we want to build that lighthouse pier, I think. Um, and I do appreciate, uh, Vincent and Cecilia getting out, um, that information about what to do in a timely manner.
Particularly with debris and yard waste and that kind of stuff. Uh, Mississippi Power and Coast Electric and the crews that came in, uh, everybody's just hustled. Fire Department, um, um, came down my street, there was a tree across the road, uh, within 24 hours after, after the eye passed over, they, they had removed that obstacle, and I'm sure they were doing that throughout the city. So, everybody was hustling, and, uh, we certainly appreciate that. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Newman?
I did, I did have a question from some residents, uh, about the pier situation, if they are broken up wood pieces, can they just go and get them, or do they have to get permission to go get some?
It's their pier, and of course, they can do that. I've done that myself.
Okay. I was like, well, I, I guess, you know, you can't stop them from doing it, so, but they wanted permission, so had to find out.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, it, it, you know, we don't have to have a, a, a DMR permit to put it back together. That's, that's not an issue. Uh, unless you have to put new piling down, but that, that we will work on that. Uh, and we have recovered a, a lot of our lighthouse pier and relocated, uh, the, the remnants, especially some of the sections that are in place to Oak Street to use as, uh, uh, materials to replace the things that are left, uh, without a lot of, uh, purchasing there. But, uh, I didn't mean to, uh, take in part of your report, but we're going to figure out how to do that, so we don't have to do this again, do it in a better way.
Amen.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Newman. Councilman Lawrence?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the department, City of Biloxi, the job they've done. The Mississippi Power, Coast Electric, they have power back on in two or three days, that's, that's amazing. You watch them guys work, and they dedicated to get the power on for you. So, that's really good. Yeah, shout out to Mississippi Power and Coast Electric for doing what they did.
Yeah.
Ain't nothing better than power.
We know that. I think, uh, just to jump in a little bit too, along those lines, I think Katrina, Mississippi Power, had a hundred thousand, uh, uh, customers down. It hit 80 during this storm, so about 90-something percent of them are, are back up and going.
Yeah. Now, the thing is, I, I think we had to congratulate the citizens of Biloxi.
Oh, yeah.
But once again, they stayed home, they picked up more debris than put on a sidewalk you've ever seen in your life. I think it looks, it looks as bad as Katrina when you're hopping down the road. So, the citizens of Biloxi, to them, thank you for doing the job you supposedly, they stayed home, stayed off the roads, and they cleaned their yard. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence. Councilman Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to acknowledge the Taylor Oaks, uh, Homeowners Association. Uh, there are several members that are here today, they'll be speaking during public comments, uh, later on about, uh, some traffic issues that, uh, all of our neighborhoods experienced, but, uh, they, they just want to, uh, give the council some specific, uh, information on that. Um, also, I'd like to acknowledge, uh, as George and, uh, other council members have, have said, the community responding to the hurricane. Uh, you, you see it, uh, when you drive around the neighborhoods. I've drove around Taylor Oaks and, and other neighborhoods, and it was the same, same theme in, in all the neighborhoods. Everybody was helping each other, asking if you want something, bottled water. Uh, we had an extra, uh, uh, we had an extra generator that we were able to give some people that, uh, it took them 72 hours and not 48 hours to get their power back, but, you know, hot water matters, you know? But, um, we, um, I also would like to, uh, charge the traffic committee, um, with assessing the, um, miles per hour in Pelican Bayou. Had a request by Mr. Kono Corana, and if they could assess it and make a recommendation, whether to keep it the same or, or if there's, uh, an opportunity to lower it. Uh, there's a lot of speeding going on throughout our neighborhoods, and, uh, Mr. Corana asked me to put that on the, uh, in the radar today. Um, also, uh, next, uh, under my, uh, well, before I get to that, uh, 5P on the consent is a waiver, the mayor alluded to it earlier, it's a waiver for commercial and residential, uh, reconstruction permits for storm damage. Uh, we need to make it easier for our businesses to, you know, remove these obstacles, get back to work, start, uh, employing, calling our employees back, and certainly making, uh, homes safer and easier for people to do the, uh, repairs to shingles and fences and, and all that stuff. So, uh, I appreciate everybody's support on that. And with the remainder of my time, I would like, uh, to ask Tom and the Pickleball Association to, uh, come up, I think they have a special presentation they want to do on behalf of, uh, the Cancer Society.
Thank you.
Okay?
Uh, on the 24th of October.
I come together.
Do we have a, a microphone?
Do we have a handheld?
It's coming.
Oh, I'm sorry. On the 24th of October, we had a, oh, I'm sorry.
Take three.
Okay. There you go. I'm loud enough, I thought. On the 24th of October, we had a successful tournament, raising money for, uh, the American Cancer Society for, uh, breast cancer awareness and prevention. And we put it, two of our great leaders, Mr. Kenny Glavine and Mr. Kevin Felser, please, Kevin, come on up. Uh, we putted them together for a tournament to raise money for the American Cancer Society. And both of these gentlemen are part of the Real Men Wear, uh, Wear Pink. They're ambassadors here on the Gulf Coast, and quite frankly, they're two leading ambassadors of the 29 ambassadors or 25? 28. They're the two leading ones. So, we had a wonderful tournament. So, I think I've got, I have, on behalf of, uh, our pickleball group, I have two young ladies that are breast cancer survivors, and they both competed in the tournament. And Mayor, would you please, on behalf of the City of Biloxi, help present this check? And, uh, Kenny, please come up, and Luanda Jones, she, Louis, excuse me, she, Jones, I'm sorry, please, over here, Luanda. She is from the American Cancer Society. She's a community development manager for the Gulf Coast, please, over on this side. And us, you three are going to present this check of $8,000. This is the proceeds from the tournament to, uh, the American Cancer Society. Please, Mayor, on behalf of the city. And I must admit, between our state representative and our councilman, one was a winner. They each had 24 teams playing for them. We had 96 players, uh, and, unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, but our state representative was a winner, and he got 4,400 points towards the Real Men Wear Pink, and Kenny got 3,600. So, it was a great tournament. No, no, please. Where do I, okay, over here. Thank you.
I'd, I'd just like to add, I want to thank, um, the administration, I want to thank Bill Raymond. Uh, we were able to light the, uh, lighthouse pink for a day. Unfortunately, the next day, we had reports of the storm bearing down on us, and, and we had to suspend that. But, uh, listen, Tom, your group, uh, Kevin, you know, all the hard work that you did, and, and all the Real Men Wear Pink and the Cancer Society, Luanda, uh, you know, I can't say enough what, how fulfilling, uh, this campaign has been for all of us. Uh, it was successful because of all of us, and it just shows what we can do with the big hearts that we have here on the Gulf Coast. So, I'd like to thank everybody for that.
And, and I know you're going to remember, Councilman, that, uh, items 5M and, uh, 5G, is it? No. 5F, 5F and 5M have to do with pickleball, and then you're going to call our attention to that, I'm sure.
Yeah, and, uh, I'll, I'll let the, uh, councilman that that ward resides in, he can, uh, kind of talk about that a little bit, but that's, again, this pickleball stuff is, is fantastic. If you, if you don't know much about it, get involved with it, it'll hook you, and, uh, it is very, very great. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. Councilman Gines?
Oh, wow. Congratulations again, uh, State Representative, Councilman Glavine.
Thank you.
I just want to echo pretty much what everyone else said.
Thing back on. Yeah, what everyone else said about, uh, our community, our community was resilient, and, um, I saw a lot of people helping each other out there in the community. And the communities got back very, very fast. Uh, I also want to thank Mississippi Power, uh, which pretty much covers, uh, my area. Mississippi Power was very diligent in getting people power back on. And even when I called them, uh, you know, your, your residents will call you over and over and over, uh, they were very sensitive to the people who had oxygen. So, when I talked to them and talked about people who had oxygen, Mississippi Power, I mean, they went out there and they took care of it. And by Saturday evening, Sunday morning, all of the power in my community was hooked back up. So, big kudos to Mississippi Power. Um, Ms. Christie, I want to thank you for taking care of that fence for me on Keller Street. Other than that, uh, that's all, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Gines. So, I will leave only my reports. Um, I know we're, we're trying to make this quick, so I'm going to be short. George has, I think it's, what, it's seven generations of Lawrencees now? Something like that? You guys have been around since Biloxi was founded? Uh, we're going to keep it quick. Uh, Department of, um, Engineering and Public Works, if you'd give me an update on the sidewalk project and even some of the stuff regarding the, the Pops Ferry Speedway dividers for that, for that lane, things like that, you can give it to me on email if you'd like. I just want to get an update to, to get it, to get it out to the ward members, um, but if we could get that information, so we could see where it's at. I know it's coming close to getting scheduled to be done. Um, and with regard to F and M on the consent agenda, I know that, that the members of, of my ward and especially the pickleball community appreciate that, but I can't take credit for that. Uh, I think, I appreciate the, um, the consideration by Councilman Glavine to let me talk about it. You know, it's, it's something that we ask for, but when you got a guy like Pickleball Tom, really going to bat for you or, or going to paddle for you, whatever you call it with pickleball, it makes it a whole lot easier to get those things accomplished, and, and we want to appreciate the administration for listening to those requests and making it happen. So, thank you for that. And that will conclude my council report. We'll go to public agenda, the citizens' comments. We have 45 minutes allotted total time, three minutes per person. I'm going to start with the people on the left-hand side of the room or your right-hand side of the room. If you would care to speak, please come to the table where Mike Leonard's at, sign your name in and state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody on the right-hand side of the room, my left-hand side of them, that would care to speak? If you would, please, make your way to the table, and again, sign in, state your name and address for the record.
James Steed, 1578 Lucius Street, Biloxi. I'm here opening a collision center at 1636 Pops Ferry Road. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, James. Now, I know Mr. Steed's had, has a, are you, are you retaining the business in DeArberville or are you relocating here?
I'm retaining it.
Okay, well, I'm glad to have you expand into, into Biloxi. Thank you for being part of our city. Is there anybody else on the right-hand side of the room that would care to speak? And if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm, uh, Jacob Fiallo, and I'm the Taylor Oaks Homeowners Association President, and I'm here to talk about, uh, uh, speed tables and a possible gated, uh, access to our neighborhood. And, uh, I have some maps and some examples for y'all to look at.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Do you have those in digital format? Can you email them to us?
I can't have this.
Is there anybody else on the right-hand side of the room that would care to speak?
I'm sorry, was this a phone or a box? It's not.
Yes, you have three minutes.
You still got?
That's okay, that's why I was asking if you'd email it to us, because I wanted to make sure we received it.
I think he still has two minutes and 45 seconds.
The situation we're having, uh, in Taylor Oaks subdivision is that we, uh, we're an extremely active neighborhood. Uh, you have people jogging, people biking, uh, and, and, and lots of kids, lots of little kids, um, and that's why people want to live there. It's, it's a, it's a nice place to be, and it's a good place for, for families. Uh, the problem is, is when you, if you look at your map, coming off of Pops Ferry Road, you come down Burdone, take a left on Paul David to Campbell, uh, it becomes a cut-through to the other neighborhoods behind us. And, uh, what, what we would like to propose is a gated access at the Campbell and Paul David entrance. It would be not locked, it would be accessible to fire, safety services, and this is something that we would like to offer as, out of the, the homeowners association funding. Uh, we're not asking for any city funding on this. Uh, we are going to make it match our brick walls that we already have up. Uh, we would have it be beautiful. Um, um, in addition to that, if, if we can't get that, we'd like to ask for, uh, a speed table at Paul David, right in the middle, and a speed table at, in, in Burdone, right in the middle. Um, ideally, we'd like this, and we'd like to, again, we would, we would pay for this, or something like this. And it, it would just be a, either automatic, you pull up to it, doesn't matter who you are, you don't have to have a clicker, it opens automatically, closes automatically. Uh, if they don't like that, we could have an actual physical open and close. Uh, but it would, it would be accessible at all times. We want to slow people down. Uh, we, we have little kids, uh, Halloween night, we had an incident where, uh, there's kids everywhere and two cars speeding through there, and they, my wife actually stopped a child from going into the street, as people were going 50 miles per hour through there, if you can believe that. Look at that map. And, uh, we were almost, that would have been deadly. And, so we really, really want to make this happen. Uh, I have, uh, no problem, uh, getting approval of the neighborhood, I've already got approval on the, I'm, okay. No problem.
If you would please state your name and your address for the record and sign in for me.
My name's Neil Morris. I live at 907 Burdone Drive in Taylor Oaks subdivision, and I'm here to address something that doesn't seem like a lot, but it's golf carts, something everybody likes, except in a neighborhood when you get as many as five going down the street at, at the same time, and the median age of the driver, the median age of the driver is 13. Uh, I had occasion to, uh, during the summertime, this past summer, called the City of Biloxi Police Department on seven occasions. Uh, they came out seven times. Uh, one time, they caught one, and, uh, they didn't give them a citation, they went and talked to the young lady's, uh, uh, parents, she was 12. So, uh, he promised he'd never let her do it again, and he hasn't, so that was good. The other people, um, you don't know who their parents are, but the majority of them are from the subdivision behind us, in that gate that Jake just showed you, would stop that from happening. They raced through our subdivision to get to their buddies around our subdivision, and they have no inkling or no, there's no consequence to them driving fast or reckless, and, and they just go through. You're talking to 12, 13, and 14-year-old kids, the median age is 13. And oddly enough, they're mostly young ladies. They're girls, and the average number of people for a golf cart is four. We've counted as many as seven in a golf cart, speeding. And one in front of my house one day made the corner to go in a cul-de-sac, and it almost turned over, and that would have been devastating, there'd been some people really hurt. And then one of them smacked my mailbox, which I didn't appreciate, but I fixed it myself. So, anyway, it's just something that we want to do to, uh, to stop that situation, and if we could get a requirement, and, uh, we was talking to Mike here a little bit before, um, for a driver's license requirement due to age for these golf carts, I think that would eliminate the problem totally, because none of these kids have driver's license. It may be a speed requirement, seat belts, something like that, just to notch it up a little bit to where you'd have a responsible driver. And that concludes what I'd like to say about golf carts, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Is there anybody else on the right-hand side of the room? I'm writing slow. There we go. And if you would, sir, please state your name and address for the record and sign in for me.
My name is Charles Whiteside. I'm at 1900 Paul David Drive. I'm going to follow up on Jacob's conver- conversation, because you probably hear enough about our neighborhood. But I reside right in the middle of the straightaway from the three-way off of Burdone to the back entrance. I'm exactly in the middle. And that's usually where the- And that's usually where the peak speed is. I was sitting in my driveway, actually not as far from the two cars that were speeding as I'm sitting from you. He says 50, and it was in excess of that. It was almost like a street party, it's a wonderful neighborhood, tons of kids and family members, 30 or 40 in the street at that turn, when they, it could have been very devastating. We've been working on this, I've been in there four years next month, and we've been working on this for a while. But it really made it stressful to me between myself and other parents there. I have six grandchildren, I'm blessed with that, that'll be in that street probably in the next year or two. And I just don't want to see something happen. It was very lucky that we got out of Saturday night and didn't have something negative associated with such a wonderful neighborhood. That's really all the comments I have to, if you would, please consider it at whatever time, if it's the gating approval, if it's the speed tables. We will be very flexible with engineers or whoever comes out for the placement of the speed tables. It won't be any confusion, the neighborhood's ready to act.
Thank you, Mr. Whiteside.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on the right-hand side of the room that would care to speak? Is there anybody on the left-hand side of the room, my right-hand side, that would care to speak?
Thank you.
And if you would, would you please state your name and address for the record and sign in for me?
Yes, my name is Martha Hunt Tripp, and I live at 132 Jefferson Davis Avenue. I'm here regarding 4C, short-term rental that is trying to make a place in our neighborhood. I've lived on Jefferson Davis Avenue for 65 years. I lived across the street from my sister, my mother lived up the street. And the short-term rental is on 120 Acacia Avenue, which is just one street over from me. I oppose the vacation rentals. I know you all have a packet, I'm sure, because the planning commission voted 6 to 4 not to permit this to happen, but I didn't write a letter. I spoke, and so I felt like I should come here tonight to speak to, to let you know how I feel about it. You know, the short-term rental, I'm all for having people in our neighborhood, but I'm for a quiet neighborhood, and I feel like this may jeopardize our quiet neighborhood. If you have short-term rental people, they like to have a good time. Shoot, they're here for a vacation. Me too, I want to do the same thing. So you're going to have extra cars, and you're going to have a lot more noise in your neighborhood. And why do I say that? Because it actually happened on my street, Jefferson Davis Avenue. A lady from Texas came, bought a house, she fixed it up and said it slept 19 people. We had five to six to seven SUVs, we had lots of parties going on at night, and they were walking up and down our street. Pat Gill was the neighbor who lived right next door to them, he was a wreck because he didn't know who they were. He contacted George Lawrence, and Mr. Lawrence took care of it, shut it down, that lady sold that house, and now we have neighbors, we actually have neighbors. He works at the hospital and she works at a pet store. So I know my neighbors, I make sure I know who they are. And I feel like, you know, we already have a lot of noise in our neighborhood. I love Miramar Park. I mean, my son used to play there all the time, Miramar Park is a great park. But you have a lot of people, and they go there late at night, you can hear them swinging on the swings and having fun, which is, that's what it's about. But when we do have events at the park, you know, cars are parked way high, way up on Acacia. I've met the people that want to do the vacation rental. I've told them I'm happy to have them in my neighborhood, but I'm not for their vacation rental, um, short-term rental. A lot of our neighbors in Acacia and Jeff Davis are against this.
I'm sorry, Ms. Tripp, your comment is out.
Okay, that's good. But I do want you to know, I appreciate you all listening to us, and there are people here tonight that are also going to speak. And if you have a question, we will be here to answer any question that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. What was your address?
132 Jefferson Davis Avenue.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
He said you called. Yeah. Thank you again, appreciate you.
And if you would please state your name and address for the record and sign in for me.
Sure, Heather Ritchie, 190 Acacia Avenue. I'm here to about 4C. I wasn't at the previous meeting, nor did I write a letter, we're fairly new, and I'm afraid I didn't know about it, because I believe our mails still go into the previous owner. However, my husband and I absolutely love that neighborhood, we love our neighbors, but we are vehemently against the short-term rental. While that's only, applies to the first few houses at the end of our street, it affects the entire neighborhood. We like it quiet, we like knowing what's going on, and I know that the ordinance is very specific as far as parking and things like that for the short-term rentals, but I can't imagine that that could be enforced very well at 11 o'clock on a Saturday night. We do ask that you please do not pass that, and if you have any questions, we'll be here till the end.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. Is there anybody else on the left-hand side of the room, if you would, please?
My name is Quincy Washington. I'm at 2436 Beach Boulevard, and...
To Quincy Washington?
Quincy Washington, that's correct. Recently relocating to the, relocating back to the Mississippi Gulf Coast, and one of the ideas that I had was to bring a food truck down to the Gulf Coast. And I've spoken to Mr. Tisdale and Mr. Gignans last week about this, and I see that you guys have started putting forth some regulations around mobile food vendors. So just trying to gain some clarity on this and trying to get a better understanding of the direction of the city. I live in Memphis right now, again, like I said, I'm from the Mississippi Gulf Coast, been gone 25 years, looking to relocate my family here and establish businesses. Biloxi is a place that I believe is on the forefront of taking advantage of opportunities like this. I see what's going on in Ocean Springs, I think Biloxi could be just as good, if not better, than Ocean Springs. And I'm looking forward to taking advantage of that. And so I want to be here, and I want to know that the City of Biloxi is going to be embracing the food truck culture. We have festivals in Memphis, Tennessee, where I live now, I spend time in San Francisco and Seattle, there are festivals and things like that, there are opportunities where cities can take advantage of things like this. And as I ride down Highway 90, especially during the hurricane, there are a lot of areas that used to be very, very beautiful. And like I said, I was born here right over in Pasco Gula, so I remember how beautiful this place used to be. And there are certain pockets of property here that we can take advantage of and create a certain culture here where people are excited about coming back here, and even the locals coming out and enjoying some of the things that we have available. So I want to be able to understand the ideas that the city has, understand how you all are going to embrace the food truck culture and see what I can do to support it. Because I have a colleague who's also come in, he's a native of Biloxi as well, has a food truck, also there's another food truck vendor, Tasty Tacos, that have been around. And we're all wanting to know what step the city is going to take and how we can support that, and what do you need from us to make this something that everybody can get excited about, so.
Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments, sweet. This isn't a Q and A, but I would love to speak with you more about it, if you'd find me on the website, under Ward 4, you'll have my phone number and my email address.
Sounds great, thank you, I appreciate the time, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, we look forward to having you back on the coast.
All right.
Is there anybody else on the left-hand side of the room? If you would please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record and sign in for me, please.
Hi, I'm Cheryl White. I reside at 141 Jefferson Davis Avenue, but I also own properties at 134 Acacia and 140 Acacia. I'm here regarding 4C, the short-term rental property at 120 Acacia proposal. I am completely against it. I can tell you that when we have short-term rental activities, such as cruising the coast, things like this, where people rent out just their land that is close to our properties, I've ended up with people literally sleeping in my backyard between my shed and my fence. I've had to clear an area around a tree because I had someone that was staying behind there. People use it as a restroom as they're going through our neighborhood, people throw their trash. I spend every other weekend cleaning up the two lots that I have on Acacia, just from people that are cutting through and throwing their garbage there. When that house was occupied not long ago, there was a lot of music, it was very loud, we could hear it a street over. It's not conducive to just a comfortable, quiet neighborhood setting, which is what we got down here for.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you.
If you would please state your name and your address for the record and sign in for me.
My name is Beverly Hammond. I live at 148 Acacia Avenue, and I'm here also about the short-term rental proposal for the end of our street. My husband and I have lived on Acacia Avenue since 1962. We moved there because it was considered a neighborhood. It was Miramar subdivision, and we, our family grew up there, and it's a special place. It's a neighborhood where everyone looks out for each other, we exchange phone numbers, we know the people that live on our street, so we just look out for each other all the time. Also want you to know that the lot just south of 120 has been sold. These people are planning on building a home that they will live in. Now, how do you think they're going to feel when they find out that there's a possibility that 120 may be used for short-term rentals, when they thought they were buying in a neighborhood? As you consider voting on this, I want you to just put yourself in, like, if one, if someone that wanted a short-term rental had a house in your neighborhood or next to you, is this what you would like? People parking on your lawn, late music at night, people outside the house walking, talking, and hollering? I don't think that's what you'd want in your neighborhood. So please consider voting against using that. Also, remember, you're opening Pandora's Box. This is not the only couple, or the only person that will be asking for this. And so please give it some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Is there anybody else on the left-hand side of the room or in the back that would care to speak? And if you would please state your name and your address for the record and sign in for me.
My name is Linda White. I'm the owner of the residence at 135 Jefferson Davis Avenue. I've been blessed with children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. I have three four-year-old great-grandchildren that play in the two lots that we own, that my daughter owns in back of my house and at my house. I am so fearful of rental, these temporary rental people to come in and not realize what children are there and possibly hurt one of my love, lovely children. So I am so against this temporary rental. We're in a residential area, they can go to a condo, they can rent, they can go other places and rent, they don't need to be in our residential area. And I appreciate you hearing me.
You're welcome, thank you for coming in, Ms. White. Is there anybody else on the left-hand side of the room or my right-hand side that would care to speak, or in the back? There being none, this will close public comments, move on to the policy agenda. A and B were removed, if we'll start with C.
Resolution to deny a request for conditional use for short-term rental for property located at 120 Acacia Avenue.
Thank you, Lucy. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Paul Tisdale, and a second by George Lawrence. Councilman Tisdale, your discussion?
Yes, we've had quite a few discussions over short-term rentals, and earlier we had voted on not permitting short-term rentals as a conditional use in RM 20 and 30. And I think Mr. Lawrence and I were the only ones who voted in favor of that. And just as a reminder, the R in RM 20 and RM 30 is residential, and it's designed pretty much exclusively, I believe, for apartments. So as we begin putting short-term rentals in RM 20s and 30s, we're removing some affordable housing, by that I mean apartments, but we're also putting commercial enterprises, about which we learned quite a few new facts at the workshop last week we had with the Department of Revenue that I suspect a lot of short-term rental operators are not aware of. So we do need to schedule a workshop for realtors in short-term rentals with the Department of Revenue, those reps. But I think, and Mr. Lawrence can speak to this further since it's in his ward, but I just believe that, and I know the neighborhood quite well, I believe the remainder of the council prefer to continue approving short-term rentals on a conditional basis, on an individual basis. So that's where we are today. I worry about consistency, but more importantly, I worry about, again, commercial enterprise in a residential neighborhood, particularly a settled residential neighborhood. So, Mr. Lawrence?
Councilman Lawrence?
This is what y'all wanted, to bring it back, to vote on it. Well, this time you need to stand up for the neighborhood and deny this. This is what we supposed to do. You said vote them one at a time. Felix Gagnon's right, that's what we doing. One at a time, and this one definitely should be denied in this neighborhood. So y'all support the denial?
Is that all, Councilman Lawrence? That's the historically shortest comments you've ever given. Discussion on the council?
Actually, it's in my ward. And we've been back and forth on short-term rentals for more times than I can count, and you're either for it or you're against it, there's no middle ground feeling there. And I truly do feel conflicted, being that some residents are very strongly opposed to it. But sitting that this structure is sitting near the beach, it makes it a perfect fit for short-term rentals, and I am an advocate for short-term rentals. So if it was in a, in the middle of the actual residential neighborhood, I could definitely understand the concern. And I have already spoken and gave my word for being an advocate on the short-term rentals, so I definitely don't want to go back on my word, just because I'm feeling like I don't want to upset my residents. But I can assure my residents that it is a conditional use permit, which can be pulled just as easily as we approve. And ironically, I actually looked at that house to purchase it for myself, but I was too late. So then today, I actually looked at another house in the same neighborhood, so I just might actually be your neighbor, and I'll be right up in the middle of it with you. So in voting of approval, it's not because I'm not going to feel your pain, if that's the case, but you can always call me if there is an issue, because like I said, it's a conditional use. So if there is any issues, we can always address those. However, going forward, I would like to table this, and we would like to get a report on any of the previous short-term rentals that we have approved, had there been any reports, any incidents, anything that the people have mentioned today that's been going on, on any of the short-term rentals that we have approved so far.
So I have a motion by Councilwoman Newman to table this, subject to call pending a report from the Public Safety Department regarding incidences in short-term rentals. Do I have a second? Well, I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion to table? Gentlemen, Councilwoman? All in favor? Those against? Motion fails, two to four. Those for Newman and Deming, those against Glavine, Gines, Tisdale, and Lawrence. We'll return to the agenda item as it remains on the table. Councilman Glavine, your discussion?
Yeah, um, so, you know, these issues come before council and uh again, has always been the test for me and that's why they come before the council and people come here and talk to us, to let them know how they feel in their neighborhood that this is affecting. And you saw a very emotional plea. I heard one residence that was been there since 1962, the year I was born. And uh, you know, that, that's very telling to me when you feel that passionate about the area that you live in and why you invested in that area, why you live there, why you have quiet enjoyment there. And um although I look at these on a case-by-case basis personally, and part of the test is how does the residents in the area feel about it? And what, what is the character of the neighborhood certainly? And when there's an emotional outcry to ask this city council that represents the people to preserve their quiet enjoyment, I'll have to support the residents in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. Councilman Gines, discussion?
Yes, because George so eloquently called my name, I, I feel compelled to say a few words. We must not forget we're here to serve at the will of the people. And when I make a decision, George, it's based on the will of the people. So, when we do a conditional use, we do a conditional use because the people of that community support it. And so, we must remember, we, we are here to serve at the will of the people, our constituents, and that's the way I'm gonna vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gines. Is there any further discussion on the council?
Uh, just one question of Mr. Creel. Mr. Creel, can you recall where a short-term rental has had their permit pulled because they violated one of the conditional uses in a short-term rental? I mean, I'm, I'm sure there have been other instances where there have been, but not, I mean, short-term rentals are relatively new. I don't recall one, but I, I don't know if, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Director Creel, are you aware of any public safety concerns? Have we, I don't, I don't have anybody from the Public Safety Department here to ask directly and the council denied the table to get an actual report. So, I'm asking you if there's been any, any communication or even the administration, Mr. Mayor, or Mike Leonard, has there been any overwhelming concerns regarding the safety of, of short-term rentals or any individual locations?
Not, not that we're aware of. Of course, we go out and we inspect each short-term rental whenever they apply for an application and they get approved. Both the fire department and our department go in and inspect it, make sure there are no life safety issues. Now, the lady that spoke about people sleeping in the backyard, that's trespassing. She could call the police and make it take care of something like that. But uh, I'm not aware of any life safety. Most, most of the concerns that we hear about
Noise.
Is that there's someone that's moving in next door on a short-term basis and they're more concerned about what could happen. A lot of them are missing or something like that and we don't know who these people are or where they came from.
Or noise.
Yeah. It seems to be more on those lines.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Tisdale?
Yes, one other, one other comment.
Mr. Tisdale, give me a moment to finish my comments. I promise you, I'll, I'll address you.
Sure, please do.
As, as Ms. Newman and even eloquently spoken by Councilman Glavine and Gines, we do serve at the will of the people. Um, it's not my ward, so I don't have the pleasure of being addressed directly from anyone. What I, I, I do have a problem with the lack of information regarding the safety and without having some Public uh Safety Department giving me some numbers, I, I can't vote for or against this without the information. So, I will, I'll vote present or abstain from the vote. Councilman Tisdale?
Yes, I just um want to remind those council members present that we have another short-term rental issue that has been on and off the agenda a couple of times now in Ward Five. You may remember this is off Briarfield. And it was, uh, it's to be a complex of, was it forty? Forty-eight short-term rental units and uh I, I'd just like everybody to uh reflect on how they vote today because you will in fact hear from, I'm sure, from the residents in, in the Briarfield neighborhood as well, again, on this short-term rental issue. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tisdale.
Comment, please.
Councilwoman Newman?
So, what I'm saying is before we pass any other short-term rental in the future, regardless of where it is or regardless if residents come out or not, I would like to have a public hearing or something even to hopefully get residents to come out and let us know if they're having problems whatsoever after we have approved these short-term rentals. And that way we have a know, are they having issues or are they not? Maybe they were just concerned and now they're not having issues and they're maybe even considering have a short-term rental themselves. I would like to know, all the short-term rentals that we have approved, are the neighbors having any concerns? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazier. Thank you, Ms. Newman. One thing that we did not, um, you moved, who moved this? Councilman Lawrence and Tisdale seconded? Count Lawrence moved, I mean, Tisdale moved it, Lawrence. All right, there was um, she does, she does make a point and when you moved it, I don't know if you moved it to approve it, deny it, or to call for a, 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 a public hearing. So, public hearing is an option and we could do that right now if that was a concern that you'd like to have. If we'd like to address these issues, we could, we could move to have a public hearing regarding this before we move to deny it or, or approve it.
My, my motion was to approve the resolution as presented, which was to deny it based on the Planning Commission recommendation. And I know we've had a number of workshops and public hearings on short-term rentals over the past three or four years. Uh, in fact, short-term rentals, in my opinion, went from being not much of an issue to a, a contentious issue in several instances. And uh, that's true all over the United States. It's not just here in Biloxi. Mr. Creel, can you recall how many workshops? I know that the Planning Commission has had one or two workshops. I think we've had two or three workshops. Uh, we just had one last week really with the Department of Revenue to answer questions. So...
With, with all due respect, Councilman Tisdale, we haven't had a workshop specifically addressing the public safety concerns after the passage of anything. And so, I think that's, I think Councilwoman Newman makes a very valid point in understanding if, if what we fear is actually occurring. And so, that was my concern. I understand your point too. We have had numerous public hearings and we've had a lot of discussion on this, but I'd rather have more discussion than not enough discussion. So, if you're moving to...
I have no, excuse me, I have no, I have no further comment. Uh, my motion was to approve the resolution, that is, to have it denied. So, you're probably looking for um a call for the question on this vote or perhaps a...
Well, I will. When we're done with discussion, I will call for a question. I wanted to clarify what
That's fine.
Exactly what you moved for. And
Thank you.
Councilman Lawrence, is that the intention of your second? Okay. To approve it as written, to deny? Right, you seconded it. Right. Okay. Well, is there any further discussion on the council? Well, I'll call for the question. Those in favor of moving Resolution C to approve the denial, signal with the raise of your hand? Motion carries four to two. Those in favor, Tisdale, Glavine, Gines, and Lawrence. Those opposed?
I abstain.
Deming and Newman abstain. We are going to move forward to Resolution D.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for the establishment of an auto painting and body shop for property identified at 1636 Pops Ferry Road.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
We had a motion by Kenny Glavine, a second by Felix Gines. Kenny Glavine, discussion?
Yeah, just a little bit. Uh, we've, we've heard earlier during public comments uh that uh we have an entrepreneur that wants to move his business into Ward Six and I think it's very reputable and needed and we look forward to supporting you and much success.
Councilman Gines?
Yes, what Kenny Glavine said.
Is there any discussion on the council? I, I would like to say a couple of things. I know Mr. Steed's business has been amazing. I've taken all of my car, well, I don't, that sounds like I've wrecked a lot of cars, but he's done a great job and I didn't take him to his shop in Deverville. He came to my house in Biloxi to do it. Wink, wink, just kidding. He does a great job. He, his, his shop's phenomenal, professional. Glad to have you in Biloxi, James. Call for the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations.
Do I have a motion for the consent agenda? Got a motion by George Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Paul Tisdale. Councilman Lawrence, discussion? Did your mic get out?
You got it. It's about the Sanger. I know we ain't changing this again, but this, did you, we have enough money to cover all these expenses we're doing in the Sanger to say it on?
We do, Councilman. There's still money in the project to cover those small change orders. As an update, the Mississippi Development Authority is poised, we think within the next week, to give us the grant paperwork for the extra $2 million we need. The contractor reports that he will be not finishing up the metal panels that are the, the, the metal panels that look like brick that, that'll be on the exterior. He won't be doing that till January, so we've actually got a little bit of slack to be able to get that money and get the change order ordered. Once we have that money, we can order the change order for the repointing or sealing of the brick on the exterior as well as other brick exterior work that the mayor wants done, including the sign which was damaged in the storm. So, uh, we're, we're on track and um, and we should have that other $2 million very shortly.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. Councilman Tisdale?
Yes, on Item P.
Lord, sorry.
It's been a confusing night, huh? I got that much gray in my hair.
Then sixty-two and it threw me off. You look great for being that old.
On Item P, uh, with all due respect to, to my friend in Ward Six, I could support a waiver of uh building permit fees for primary residential construction. I can't support it for commercial uh purposes. Have we ever done that, waived this for commercial businesses? Can anyone recall that? I don't think.
I can't recall. And but, you know, I guess, you know, for the primary, my, you know, uh, point of question is just how many, what impact would this be? And I'm, you know, I know we've had seventy-five percent of the leased residents have had some sort of damage, not to a great extent, but I don't think it's gonna be a, a great deal of money, one way or the other.
But you, but you did told me, I think, Jerry, that we, during Katrina, we did not
Charge.
Charge for businesses, only for residential? Only, we only charged for businesses?
Other way around.
Only charged for businesses and not for residential?
Matter of fact, this ordinance here was written for after Katrina and it clearly addressed the primary residents. We're not waiving only permits, we're only waiving fees.
The uh, the other thing I'd like to note, since we're having a good time with short-term rentals, is that uh if this were to be approved as written and I own and operate a short-term rental, then I would, I could have that uh waived. Anyway, that's, that's just a quirky thought I had, but um I, I support the primary residential waiving of uh building permit fees, but I can't support the commercial aspect with all due respect. Thank you.
Hey, Councilman Tisdale, do I have any further discussion on the consent agenda? Councilman Glavine?
Yeah, um, look, man, we've taken a unusual lick, uh, a string of licks, uh, going back to the last two or three years. And uh, our employment has suffered, our businesses have suffered, our residents have suffered and, you know, this, this is a, another punch in the stomach uh that came out of nowhere. I mean, we barely had time to prepare for this thing. It was on top of us before we knew it. And uh, this is for a period of six months. This is to waive uh fees for reconstruction and damage due to the hurricane, Zeta, and to assist rapidly to get our businesses back on their feet, to get our residents, their homes back and intact as quickly as possible with as little burden as possible. And that is the intent of this. Uh, this does not extend to future storms as economic conditions may be different, maybe, but certainly under the pandemic, the spillway, the recessions, the uh things that we've went through, this is the right thing to do and I would ask for unanimous support. Thank you.
Councilman Glavine, thank you. Councilman Gines, discussion?
Okay.
On any?
Just this item?
No, any item.
Item, okay, yeah. Um, just uh footstone, uh, what Kenny said, um, we need to encourage um people building back. With the state of uh what's happening with the pandemic, COVID-19, um, businesses have been hurt and we need to encourage our businesses coming back and we need to make it easier for them to make their repairs so they can get back into full operation. So, I totally uh agree with that. And I just wanna give kudos to the mayor for Disability Connect, one of my favorite organizations, I've given him a donation. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Newman? Tisdale, I'm, I'm sure you have a follow-up?
Let me go back to, to five P again. Mr. Creel, if you could give us some idea on the permits for a primary residential structure, is it a flat fee or is it a sliding fee based on the value of the property or...
One thing I would just point out is that um whatever we waive the fees, um, I understand the argument for waiving the fees, but I just wanna remind the council that the damages, let's say to a revage, we waive the fees on a revage, both my department and the fire department still have to go out there
And inspect that structure during all the repairs to make sure that everything is done the code on it. So, we're still, we'd be still providing a service without collecting a fee and, you know, the fees are designed to offset those services that, that we provide, that time that we spend going out there. So, just, that's just for your information, you know, so that you're aware, it's not just simply waiving the fee. There are still some obligations. We're gonna have to have to go out there and go through these buildings.
Question, so, so if I have a structure with a million dollars' worth of damage and I've got a repair, do you have any kind of...
It's a calc, it's a calculated fee. It's like twenty-five hundred dollars for the first five hundred thousand and then three dollars for each additional thousand above that five hundred thousand.
Okay.
And, and that comes right out of the, the code book.
All right, if I'm a homeowner, uh, it's based on the value of my home, I would assume? Or is it, no, it is?
It, it's not based on the value of the home. It'd be based on the value of the repairs. So, if you're doing, you know, thirty thousand dollars' worth of repairs, there would be one fee. If you're doing a hundred thousand, the fee would be more.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you very much, Jerry. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, Director Creel, a couple of questions. You may or may not know the answer to these. My concern is, is not so much that we collect fees from anybody, but I do empathize with the loss of revenue for the city and... the loss of revenue for the city and the use of our personnel. One question that I have is that I am not aware of, nor have the knowledge to, and so I ask, are these types of fees covered in the repair costs, or typically in FEMA recovery or insurance proceeds recovery? Do they bill for these fees?
No, I don't, I don't think they recover the fees through either insurance or through FEMA.
So the fees are, the fees are, would be a net loss to the damaged party?
That's my understanding, yes.
I would have to agree with Councilman Glavin on this. I would prefer to pass that loss to the city than to the individual, in this instance especially. I think it was, give you kudos, Kenny, it was a great idea. I'm gonna support it. That being said, I have nothing else to discover on the, well, I take that back, I do. Does anybody else have a discovery on the consent agenda? Mr. Mayor, tell me what we're doing with the city of, with the Biloxi Public Schools, storage of debris. This was an add-on, so I didn't have this beforehand to understand it.
It is about 12 acres that formerly, oh, I'm sorry, the Buvaw School property, Hollis Field, baseball field, I think that's the lay-down area so they can stage the stuff that's happened on the peninsula, it'll be there and then transported to the landfill. So it's just the use of that property, I think it was about 12 acres in total, to bring the debris from the streets, outside of the streets, to that place, and then it's going to the permanent, to the landfill north of the bay.
Okay.
Transfer site.
To transfer site, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Any further discussion on the council? Call for the question. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Those opposed, any individual items, please tell me now.
Item P only.
Councilman Tisdale is in opposition to item P. Are there any other items by any other council members that you are in opposition to? There being none, we will move to the routine agenda, excuse me, code enforcement hearings. We don't have any, so we will go to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move it.
Motion by Councilman Lawrence, second by Tisdale.
Walrode, what we got?
No money, no funny.
Nothing?
Sixty days ahead.
Well, yeah, it was quiet last week when you weren't here. Did you have to say wal?
We don't, no matter what, we reverse that this time, pipeline, there is that previous $6,000 that in our last conference call, we should become a new society. We are not a, that, that, how many payments out of the Congress, still go on the case.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the routine agenda?
Yes. On item A, item 1B, this is a structured demolition, 1612 Lewis Avenue. We heard, we had a little discussion, I think, earlier and pulled this demolition and another demolition on Mason Road. And since then, the, I guess, the owner of record of that property has now gotten the permits from the city. He's begun renovating the home. He's got, I think, a debris, what am I thinking of? Yeah, thank, thank, thank you, thank you. A dumpster there on site. So I guess the appropriate measure would be to deny that particular item? I don't know. We've never had this before. So I think...
Well, what we would, what we would do is, if we're gonna deny it, I think we need to vote to pull it out and vote on it separately.
Right. So I would make that motion that we pull item 1B out of the routine agenda and vote on it at this time.
There's a second, there's a motion by Paul Tisdale to remove item 1B from the routine agenda and vote on it separately, seconded by Dixie Newman. Discussion on that motion? All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. We will vote on item 1B separately. I'll call for the question on item 1B at this time. Is there any discussion on item 1B?
None.
All in favor of approving item 1B? Vote for that now.
No, we...
All that are opposed, raise your hand, signal with the raise of your hand.
I'm confused. You've confused us, sir.
We're voting to, we're moving out B to vote on it separately.
Gotcha.
If you want to, if you want to approve B, vote yes. If you don't want to, vote no. Those in favor of item 1B, please signal with the raise of your hand.
I'm sorry, read it one more time.
Those in favor of approving 1B?
Thank you.
Signal with the raise of your hand. Those who oppose 1B, you can.
Probably just pull the damn...
Correct. Well, we're having fun. If you would prefer us just to remove it, I don't know that we can, we've already approved the agenda. We'd have to, we'd have to suspend the rules and remove it. It's on the agenda. We're just moving it to a different place in the agenda to vote on it separately, so it's not removing it from the agenda itself.
Question?
Mm-hmm.
Did you, did you remove this? I mean, pull us to give more time, or you wanna vote it? What is your purpose to do what you're doing? When it was on the agenda but removed previously, there was a question over who was responsible for the structure.
I understand all that.
Okay.
So what are you doing here?
We're cancel, yeah, we're canceling it.
They actually have a permit. They were, the issue on this house was that they did not get site control. They had one deputy member...
Got all that. Then we oughta do it like Lucy said, remove it.
And we gave them the permanent repair structure, and it was carrying, so this could be...
It's already been moved for approval when we moved the routine agenda, so it's on the table for approval. So we removed it from voting on it with the whole pack, so we're voting on it independently. And the call for the question would be to approve it. So if we don't want to approve it, we just vote to deny it.
So if nobody votes for it, then what happens?
That's right. If nobody votes for it, it fails for lack of motion. I would prefer that we vote against it, so it actually fails. So again, I'll call for the question. All in favor of approving item 1B? Signal with the raise of your hand. Those that oppose it, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion fails for, no, it doesn't. Motion fails for lack of, for lack of majority. You didn't raise your hand. No one raised, three people didn't raise their hand. There's three, three.
Back and just did.
Just raise your hand to deny it so they don't have to pay it. This needs to be denied because they have a site plan.
Well, Lucy told you the best thing to do is just remove it completely. I don't even want you voting on it. I mean, just remove it off the thing. You don't have to vote on it.
It's already been voted on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna vote for paying anybody anything.
We're not paying, we're not paying anyone anything. We're voting to not pay.
We voted to vote on it separately, so just make a motion or remove it, since we're voting on it separately.
Give me a motion to suspend the...
I move that we remove this totally out of it.
Move to suspend the rules.
I, I move to suspend the rules and remove it.
There's a motion to suspend the rules by Felix Guines, seconded by Paul Tisdale. Ms. Lucy, will you read the removals? Can't wait till next meeting. I'm done with this.
To remove 1A, which is the structured, excuse me, structured demolition with Simmons Trucking for $2,600. B is the structured demolition at 1612 Lewis Avenue with Simmons Trucking for $2,800.
Thank you, Lucy. All in favor of the, you gotta move it as amended? We got a movement by George Lawrence as amended, seconded by Felix Guines, all in favor of the agenda as amended. Motion carries unanimously. 1B no longer exists. It is removed from the routine agenda. You can ask anything you wanna ask, Lucy.
It's both on item 1A and 1B, I've done with the law.
Item 1A has not been voted on, because that's the full routine agenda. We've only voted on 1B.
B.
Remove it.
Remove B.
You're just gonna remove it and then vote on the rest of it?
It's purchase A and purchase B, that's what you'll...
Right, so we're only removing B, purchase B. We're leaving purchase A on the agenda. Purchase B is a separate property. That property is, yeah, there's two separate properties there.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale.
That was only for 1B.
Mr...
Fail for lack of majority. Correct.
Mr. President, you going out with a bang tonight?
That's right.
It's like the heavyweight who just went one fight too many, but you were doing so good. Excellently navigated, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I move to recess.
So we have the routine agenda. Is there any other discussion on the routine agenda? There being none, I call for the question. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. The routine agenda passes.
Motion to move to recess.
We got a motion by Paul, motion to recess by Team Tisdale-Lawrence. I think that's the last time I get to say that. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. We are in recess.